And get started here. If I can get everybody's attention so we can get out and get through this as expeditiously as possible, welcome to the February meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first item on the agenda is we're just going to consider approval of minutes for January 18th, 2023. Commissioners?
I move that we approve the managers' question.
Second. Okay, ma'am. All those in favor of approving minutes, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. We are going to slightly out of order because I have a feeling that a lot of you are here for the third item on the agenda, which is case number PD 2022-009. We're going to get this out of the way quick and then pop back up to the first item on our agenda. Mr. Killen.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, thank you. So, the agenda item that she is referencing, Mr. Joel Allen has requested that that be tabled until the future meeting. I believe we're targeting the very next month. Because the letters had already gone out notifying you of tonight's meeting, we are required by ordinance to actually act on it in the meeting before we table it because you were notified that there was a public hearing on it. So, I regret that you made a trip out tonight, but we are going to remove this from the hearing tonight and act on it at a future date. You will receive those same notifications for the next meeting. So, again, apologize you made the trip.
And to be clear, this is for the rezone of property located at Zero Forest Road. So, this was going from R1, single family, R2, one and two family, to PD plan development. So, this item will be tabled until next month. So, I bounced ahead because if you are here for that item, you don't need to waste any more time. You can go get your dinner and we will be addressing this next month. Okay, so, anybody want to go? Okay. I'm so sorry. We will see you all in one month's time. All right, now, we're going to go ahead and continue with case number two, case number PD 2023-001. Applicant Regan Thompson, representing TSU Catholic LLC, is requesting a rezone of properties located at 1292 West Washington, parcel R77944, being block 134, lots 12, 1830B, 31, parts of the City Edition, 1334 West Washington, parcel R30249, being block 134, lot 40, ATM machine of the City Edition, 1350 West Washington, parcel R30251, being block 134, lots 1528 of the City Edition, 1303 McNeil, parcel R30272, being block 134, lots 32 of the City Edition, 1345 McNeil, parcel R30271, being block 134, lot 31, S150 of the City Edition, and 1353 McNeil, parcel R30270, being block 134, lot 38 of the City Edition, to the city of Stevieville, Arath County, Texas, from B1, neighborhood business, B2, retail and commercial, and R3, multifamily residential to planned development. That was a lot.
You did good.
The applicant will present a conceptual plan. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I missed some of that. Could you repeat? No, thank you. So, staff's been working with Regan Thompson on a conceptual plan. He's presented. It's, we've included his download for you in your packet. This plan is a mixed-use development and includes 13,025 square feet of retail and restaurant space, and then it has also 38 units that are one-bedroom, one-bath, and 14 units that are two-bedroom, two-bath for residential use. Project completion is anticipated for Q2 of 2024, assuming that he receives approval for his PD next month. On page 24, I think that's a good, good page to reference the site plan and look at some of the things that I wanted to point out on the site plan. His site plan provides a deceleration lane and additional rideaway dedication along Washington. The TIA that he, traffic impact analysis that he is working on, estimates that this development will reflect lower traffic generation in comparison to the previous uses, and also pedestrian studies are being conducted, which we believe will actually enhance some of the pedestrian safety there at the site. His proposal does provide setbacks from the existing residential spaces, and his site plan also provides parking, which can be utilized as buffer zones adjacent to some of the residential uses that will remain. The footprint of the building will be similar to the existing building. However, one portion of the building on this site will extend south approximately 75 feet, and then at the southernmost tip of that building, the new building, will be approximately 145 feet from McNeil Street. So, I just want to point out that the spacing in relation to existing residential properties is going to be close to what we see now, given in many regards, less than what future developments could present if they utilize those same parcels for a different development. The existing tower, for the cell phone tower, will be granted an access easement from McNeil Street. This is being provided through an agreement with the developer. There are points of access onto McNeil Street, and you have a fire lane access from Washington down to McNeil Street to provide for first response emergencies. The site plan provides 194 spaces. Only 165 spaces would be required for this development. The pre-existing businesses included a bar, a restaurant, and a convenience store. The current zoning allows for B1, neighborhood business, B2, retail and commercial, and R3. He is combining the B2 component and the residential R3 component for his project. The multifamily unit density as currently zoned would allow for approximately 20 units on a one-acre combined site of three multifamily parcels. Those 20 units, assuming they could be three-bedroom units, would be 60 beds. He's proposing 66 beds and 52 units, and the existing B1 and B2 lots could be used for multiple permitted uses. Some of those arguably could be more invasive to the adjacent area than what the proposal presents. The proposed mixed-use development is, again, providing restaurants, retail, and residential. It does align closely with some of the components of the comprehensive plan, and although not exclusively for Charlton State University use, it will provide some relief to their student housing needs for future, future growth. Known concessions for this particular PD at this time would be the front setback along Washington. This is after the rideaway dedication occurs, so Mr. Thompson is going to dedicate the additional 25-foot of rideaway. This building would be right next to that additional rideaway, but the only time that would ever be a problem is if we expanded Washington and took in that 25-foot rideaway. Even then, his building is a, there's some distance between the actual brick and mortar part of the building because the canopy overhangs from that building towards the rideaway. So, there would be some room in there if it became absolutely viable for future growth of Washington, expansion of Washington. Let's see, the, the building height is requested to be roughly 51 feet, with roof-and-top structures making the total height 65 foot. The B2 zoning generally regulates height at 35 feet, so we want to make sure that we're aware of that. They are asking for some variations on signage ordinance to include LED or neon type lights. They would want signage on the side of the building as well as the front, which I believe that's any facade signage is approved. They did ask for some off-site opportunities for signage, and that's something that we'll probably have to look at a little more closely next month to see if we can accommodate that. Not all turn radia on the site plan meet a 26-foot minimum. However, the main entrance and exit is at 26 foot. It's been reviewed by our fire marshal, and he is in agreement with the site plan as presented. Again, the PD exceeds parking and landscape requirements. They have provided a very thorough conceptual plan, which I'm sure we'll have time to review, and the development plan, again, meets multiple components of a comprehensive plan. They provide schematics and coordination for the future development. We do have two letters of opposition. That's a report to the commission for review, and with that, Madam Chair, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Steve?
Steve?
Notwithstanding the, the current zoning and the future land use, what, in your opinion, is the highest and best use for this property?
Great question, Mr. Barnes. I appreciate that. What I was alluding to in my comments was the existing zoning. I think if we left it as is, could, could bring developments to the city that I'm sure would enhance the area and be advantageous over what we've had and what it currently is as they're vacant buildings at the moment. But, the proposal, in my opinion, I think is certainly a win for the community, and I think it complements the area. We do have residential zoned lots along McNeil Street, and if those stayed residential, then again, the density for that housing could, could come close to what Mr. Thompson is, is proposing in his development. So, with that, without further rambling, I think I'm going to say that I think the mixed-use development is a, is a high and best use for this property.
Thank you.
Is the building that currently houses Coldsmoke, is that included? Do they own that? Is that included in this development? Is that separate? It's included in the, the yellow marks, but it's not clear to me how that-
So, there's a red line there. They, at one time, that's a great question. They had acquired that at one time. That property has been conveyed back to Coldsmoke, and that is basically the same footprint as it had originally. So, the new development will basically not, it does not affect the Copeland property or Barefoot.
That just remains as is?
It's, it's basically the Coldsmoke's, remains unchanged with this.
Okay. Other questions for Steve?
I do.
Oh, no. We'll open a public hearing, and, but commissioners, any questions for Steve?
Steve, do we foresee this being an issue with TechDOT eventually? We know they want to widen Washington eventually. There's been a conceptual in design for years and years trying to figure out how to do that. Would this hinder that to go to a safer roadway, if that's, that can, that dents right there?
Well, we, we, the applicant, Regan Thompson, he is working with TechDOT now, and so-
Okay.
We've entered into those discussions and not aware of any, any hesitation from TechDOT other than the pedestrian study, the impact analysis, and the deceleration.
Would it, I guess that doesn't really fall on them, crosswalks for right there, maybe?
They're looking at the crosswalk as part of the, there is a pedestrian study, I think in conjunction with the impact analysis-
Okay.
And all that's being taken into consideration. Hopefully, we'll have some answers for you by the time we come back with the, the actual PD approval request.
Works for me. Thanks, sir.
Steve, I see that there's a partial utility locating, kind of a survey. Have, has, has any in-depth research been done to see how the utilities in that area will be affected, especially the plumbing, like sewer lines, gas lines?
Adequate water and sewer and gas.
Okay, and it won't affect those, those businesses that are already in place? I know that there's a lot of plumbing issues with some of the neighboring businesses.
I know. We are aware of the, the utilities that are present and available now, and that do not raise any concern that staff-
Okay.
I can help you with that answer. There seems to be redundancy built into the system on McNeil and Washington through there with gas and everything.
The decel lane, is that going to affect Coldstone's entrance, or not Coldstone, but the entrance, Coldsmoke, is that going to affect their entrance and parking situation?
So, I would suggest that it may help because it's separate, it's separate from what they have already, and what they have in place will remain in place.
Okay.
So, I think this will, if, if anything, maybe take some of the, the traffic off of them and allow for easier access in and out of their property. I believe the, I believe Mr. Thompson is working on a shared access agreement so that they can share not only the, the access between the two properties, but also some of the parking that his, his development will bring to the area.
Okay. Answered my question before I could get it out, Steve. It was going to be about the parking and kind of limiting what they have for that business there. You got it?
Thank you.
All right, we're good. Mr. Thompson, would you like to add anything?
Good evening. Good to see everybody again. Regan Thompson, obviously from Stevieville, currently reside here with my wife in, in Kido. So, good to see everybody again, the familiar faces, and for those I don't know, forward seeing around the community. Mr. Killen, thank you for the overview. Very well done and well said. What I'd echo is that what we really wanted to tackle as we started to develop this site was parking and, and safety. So, you'll see, based off of the current code, what's required is 165 parking spaces, and we're providing 195. That decel lane is on the northwest side of the site plan, which is really where the only place that that could fit. We're obviously on a 30 mile per hour road, and we've studied that road quite a bit, so that's the area that it could go. Downstairs, like retail, like Steve said, is going to be retail square footage. We're talking to several different businesses and concepts currently who are interested. The second and third floor will feature 66 total beds. It's not units, but that's beds. Those are efficiency style, studio, one-bedroom, one-bath, and two-bed, two-bath. Those 66 spots will have 66 reserved, numbered, and assigned parking spaces attached to those. We've got study lounges on the second and third floor, as well as exterior amenity spaces that the students could enjoy that face Washington Street. In the back, you'll notice on exhibit D there, that, that area is going to be really an outdoor amenity space where we imagine some hardscape and landscape where you can sit and relax and gather. So, we're currently doing a, a TIA, traffic analysis, and pedestrian study on Washington. You'll see the cameras up currently, and that results will be relayed back. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I believe I'm going to, I'm, we are not voting on this today. This is just the presentation of the plan, but I, I think we have some people here that are interested in voicing some concerns. So, I'm going to go ahead and open a public, a public hearing. I want to note that we have received two letters of opposition, one from Chris Martinelli and another from Carrie Dillon. So, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. There is a form that you'll need to fill out. You can do it after if, if you haven't done it yet, but is there anybody here who would like to speak in opposition to this rezone request?
I would.
Okay, so if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, which I believe you'll put three minutes up for, to state your concerns.
My name is Stephanie Starr. I live at 1330 West McNeil. My grandparents owned the house, and I inherited it. Born and raised here in Stevieville, graduate high school, Charlton. I, that's where I work now. I go to school now, too. I'm all about the growth, love it, but not whenever it's in my front. My front door to the road is like 50 feet. If you saw the amount of traffic that goes through there now, it is not safe for a kid to go out there and play. I did as a kid, played right there on the street. It's not a big deal. I understand things are not the same, but it's even with that big, huge one that's just right down the road, and it's huge neon lights. Would y'all want that shining in your house? Because it's not fun. Anyway, I just, I don't think it's a good spot right there, or it needs to be something else. Just not something like this.
Okay.
And then my mom, also Lisa Riley, she may have sent a letter of opposition as well. She lives into the house next to me, 1346 West-
Okay, we did not get a letter from her.
She can send one if she didn't get it in there. Quick enough.
Yeah, she, she can do it for the next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Apologize for not, it's been 20 years since last time I was here.
We appreciate your time. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anybody who would like to speak in support of this rezone request? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, we, yes, sir?
I'd just like to ask a couple of questions.
Why don't you come up to the podium and give us your name and address, and if you could put three minutes?
I'm Mike Blue, Montana Restaurant, and I don't have opposition. I'm, I think I support it. My question is, today, I've just now seen that where the, the rideaway, where you're taking 25 feet, where is that 25 feet coming from and where is it going to? How long is it? Does it come across the property that I have been leasing for 31 years? Is it going to take that in? Is my property going to be unscathed? I know my water and sewer are out there. The, the property that's there now, where the, the service station was, I've had people run over my water meter and, and break it, and then the city would tell me that I have to fix it, that it's, that they won't fix it. I have to, I have to repair it. So, I'm wondering where those water meters are going to be moved to? Am I going to lose parking spaces? Just, just normal questions about my business.
Sure.
And I'm sure other people up and down through there, I mean, is that 25 feet coming off of that side of the, of the property where, that I'm leasing?
Okay.
I'm guessing it would be.
Let me, is that the, all the questions?
That's, that's pretty much.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm going to relay this to Steve. I believe that this would not impact your property whatsoever, but I'm going to defer this to Steve.
I, I don't think it will. Mr. Blue, it's going to be on the western edge of-
Deceleration lane?
Yes, yes, sir. I'll tell you what, if, if I can ask you to give me a call tomorrow, let me look at the relation to your, your business, and we'll, we'll get those questions answered.
I've just been down these roads to TechDOT before on my restaurant in Brooklyn. They're not very helpful.
You'll be helpful. Call, call this guy.
We will, we will try to answer your question. I'll get your questions answered tomorrow. Be able to look at the relation of your business into where we are seeing this reduction in the decel.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. So, we are not actually voting on this. This is just the presentation. So, this is our opportunity, commissioners, for us to make any comments or suggestions to the involved. Do we have anything that we'd like to, to put out there? Do we have anything that we'd like to, um, to put out there?
I have a couple of questions, sir, just one. Um, there has been some concern about, um, the, the, I'm going to call it light pollution that might be brought on by this building. How, um, how do you think you'll address those issues in, in order to be a good neighbor to those who are maintaining their residences, their, their single-family homes there along McNeil? Can you kind of speak to that?
Or, or how about, how about we do this? Let's just make suggestions, and then when they come back?
Okay.
They'll have addressed those. So, let's just say what we want, what we're worried about, and what you guys want, we want you to address next time. So, light pollution?
I got you. So, light pollution i- is something that would definitely be a concern, I think, and I think you've heard it at least once. We've had some letters as well that, that were concerned about this, this larger complex moving in right behind us. And so, um, I think anything you can, you could do to, to prove that you're, you're going to be a good neighbor to those who, um, who are maintaining their homes in that area, um, would, would, in my opinion, would be, uh, would be beneficial for the community on the whole.
Other suggestions for developers?
I think it might go well for Mr. Blue's concerns if we figure out some sort of barricade, even a, maybe a arbor hedge or something between the property and his property. As I've seen that, too, they'll turn him to go to the gas station or to Bostocks back in the day and just go right through.
Other?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for a block eight.
We're, we're just relaying suggestions. Other, other concerns that we have?
I'm kind of concerned with the number of exits on the McNeil.
Exits on McNeil?
Because from my figures that I'm getting off his information, we're looking at thirty-six feet between, uh, three of them, and that's, uh, something that we could probably address, that there's not so much activity going on to the, on the McNeil. Maybe eliminate the center, uh, entrance out of the three.
That's, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because I noticed that as well. Do, do we really need all three? Do you, uh, can we pull that picture up?
Uh, nineteen forty-five.
It does kind of look like we're funneling it toward McNeil instead of Washington, which has historically been.
Yeah, instead of Washington, which, which isn't necessarily bad, but maybe funnel it to one exit versus three.
Wouldn't.
I mean, or, I guess two, because you've got that one little strip, but.
And I would probably keep whichever of those lanes more direct to the cell phone tower for their right-of-way.
Forty-four of ninety-eight, maybe?
So, I'm trying to solve the problem.
Yeah, we, we are, it's not our job to fix it, it's our job just to raise our, our suggestions, our concerns.
But that's a concern from the traffic side of it.
So, and, as for me, as from, as far as my concerns are, I just, I, I feel bad for those people in that neighborhood.
So, like, we've got one, two, three, four, it looks like.
Okay.
If we could eliminate, maybe eliminate these, so that you've only got two.
Yeah, we're not here to solve the problem.
All right, yeah, again, we're, yes, so, so we're worried about the traffic on McNeil. Mr. King, you have something?
I do, ma'am.
Yeah?
So, first off, on the right-of-way dedication. That's us requiring the right-of-way dedication on his property, only his property not. So, it won't affect what you have. And then we'll work with him and Tex dot on how that entrance is designed, but it, it will only be on his property. Uh, as for McNeil Street, whether this development happens or not, that whole area is transitioning. At some point, we will add sidewalks, probably increase street lighting, and change parking restrictions to make that more pedestrian-friendly, because there are more and more people starting to walk up and down that road as redevelopment occurs. And again, that's whether Reagan does anything or not. That, that area of town is just changing with the growth that, that's come to the community and at Carlton. Uh, in order for it to be more pedestrian-friendly, certainly in the evening hours or nighttime, it's going to change some of our street lighting necessities along that route as it goes. So, that's probably, some of that's going to occur anyway at some point. I don't, can't tell you a definite start date of that or anything, but, uh, certainly as redevelopment has occurred, and that growth happens, that those things are bumping up higher on, on our priority list. Uh, and we can talk again about driveways. I mean, I'll tell you, we've had lots of conversations about that.
And I'm sure there's, there's some play in there with what the fire department is requiring in terms of accidents as well.
Yes, and so it's, he's done his best to accommodate all the, the obstacles that, that we've seen or put in his way and meet what he needs. Uh, so, you know, I think that's addressed some of the questions.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. King. Um, commissioners, do we have any other suggestions, worries, concerns?
Might still put a sidewalk in on McNeil, I'm not saying one in the foundations, so.
Yeah, sidewalks would be required, right, Steve?
Yeah, it's not expressed any, any interest in trying not to do anything other. I mean, they, they haven't said they do not intend to put sidewalks in, so.
So, I have a question. On the sidewalks, you're, they're going to be on the same side of Reagan, as property, or are they going to be on both sides?
Both sides. Well, the sidewalks will be required by, by, by our ordinances.
On Washington.
On Washington, on McNeil.
Just on his property?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Um, my concern is just that the people living in that neighborhood, trying to protect them as much as we can, you know? Whatever sort of buffer we can allow, whatever sort of, um, you know, for the poor guy who's one little property is kind of.
Sandwiched.
Sandwiched in the middle of parking lots. I, I feel, that's a cute little neighborhood, cute little houses, I want to respect those people and try to, you know, create as much of a buffer as possible. So, it's a, it's a tough situation, but it looks like a, a great development, exciting development.
And limit the light pollution as best you can.
And limit the light, yeah. Okay, any other suggestions? Okay, we appreciate your time, thank you so much for coming, we look forward to seeing the further development of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the fourth item on our agenda today. Case number PD two zero two one dash zero zero two, update. Applicant Reese Flanagan, representing Troy Kunkel of Cowtown Properties pursuant to the requirement set forth by section one five four point zero eight of the City of Stevenville zoning ordinance, is presenting an update and requesting an extension of the development schedule for the planned development located at five twenty-five West Collins, parcel R three three two three seven of Shepherd and Collins, block six, lots one and two, and A zero zero three two Blair John of the City of Stevenville, Ewath County, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, on October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, the planning and zoning commission convened by unanimous vote, approved a rezon request from industrial and development, um, and that recommendation went to city council on November second, twenty twenty-one, and the city council approved ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash thirty-eight, uh, and the property was indeed rezoned from industrial to planned development. By ordinance in the PD language, we were required to give an update annually. We missed that update, and that's, uh, that's on, that's my, my mistake. Uh, but we did ask, uh, Mr. Reese Flanagan to come tonight and provide us an update on this development. This development, uh, we did receive a civil plan set that was submitted in May of twenty-two. There had been multiple reviews, uh, and, uh, the staff report said that we were waiting on the final completion of that review, and I believe, um, as of recent, we actually signed the civil plan set, and I believe Mr. Flanagan is, uh, going to share some information with us tonight, that we may actually see construction beginning on the projects, um, as early as next week. So, um, the development schedule, I believe that Mr. Flanagan, uh, will present tonight as for your consideration and recommendation to either extend the project or recommend that the council remove the project from the, the zoning district, uh, PD.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Mr. Flanagan, if you could come up and relay to us your schedule.
Sure. So, uh, Reese Flanagan, address eighteen eleven Northfield Street, Dallas, Texas. I have good news that this project is moving forward. Um, it's been a much slower start than we anticipated. Throughout last year, we went through multiple reviews, and towards the end of last year, we actually got very close to gaining approval. The last thirty days, there was a little bit of slowdown. The development team knew they were getting close to construction, and they had made a revision to the units to improve them, to ensure that trucks can fit in all of these garages. If you all remember, it's a pretty urban townhome development, it just is. Uh, a lot of the townhomes, or none of them, actually have driveways, they all have garages though, and there is guest parking, but through a lot of recommendations, everybody agreed that if you couldn't fit trucks in these garages, it would be a disaster, probably. So, a little bit of site work, site revisions have been done over the last thirty days. We've got a couple of comments left, but from a drainage review perspective, we're ninety-nine percent. Uh, my last conversation with Mr. Williams and the engineering department was that they would grant an early grading permit, because we are so close. And as of this morning, the contractor and developer were signing contracts and plan to mobilize potentially next week. There were conversations with Encore going on today about relocating some overhead lines. Um, so as far as the schedule goes, the idea is you should see dirt work in the next, this month, March, March one is, I would say, worst-case scenario. Um, overall construction timeframe would probably be twelve to fifteen months, I think. From my conversations with them, they would likely phase some of this construction to be able to sell at least some of the units as they proceed, just like a lot of multifamily units or multifamily developments go. Uh, but they do plan to start next, we know it's been a little slower, but we appreciate y'all's patience with us, and we hope that, uh, we can get, gain an extension.
Thank you, sir. Do, do we have any questions, or Mr. Flanagan?
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I should probably remove myself from this case.
Okay.
We shared cubicle walls. I didn't, I didn't realize that was even you, Reese, good to see you.
You too, well.
So, I'll, I'll stay quiet.
Okay. Any other concerns? Thank you, sir. We will, uh, ho- hold a public hearing, vote on this, and then do the other.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, we do need to hold a public hearing, is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this, um, new schedule? Anybody who wishes to speak against? Closing the public hearing. Steve, we need to just make a recommendation to council, correct?
Yes, ma'am, on page ninety-six, I listed either recommend the city council approve the modified development schedule.
Okay.
Or recommend that the city council deny the modified development schedule and recommend that it be removed from the PD district.
Okay. So, commissioners, I need a, um, I need a.
A move that we recommend the modified schedule.
Second, sir.
Okay, do we need to discuss?
I, I for one am really excited. I, I, I would just like to say, thank you for removing the eyesore, that was that old rundown shed.
Of course.
I mean, that, that already is an improvement to the neighborhood, I don't have to see it every time I drive by, so.
All right, all those in favor of recommending to council approval of the, uh, updated schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to the next and last item on our agenda. Case number PD two zero two one dash zero zero three, two zero two one dash zero zero four, and two zero two one dash zero zero five, update. Applicant Reese Flanagan, representing Troy Kunkel of five nine eight Westwood LLC pursuant to the requirement set forth by section one five four point zero eight of the City of Stevenville zoning ordinance, is presenting an update and requesting an extension of the development schedule for the planned development located at eight one seven West Washington, parcel two nine five eight three of City Edition Block sixty-two, lot six A seven fourteen seventeen, part of fourteen eight fifty-five and eight sixty-five West Washington, parcel R two nine five eight one of City Edition Block sixty-two, lots four, five, six B, part of five and eight seven three West Washington, parcel R two nine five eight zero of City Edition Block sixty-two, lot three of the City of Stevenville, Ewath County, Texas.
Glad you did. Uh, this, this is the same, uh, topic case that we, we had previously, we're basically asking the commission to consider if we want to extend the schedule or recommend that it be moved, uh, from the planned, uh, development district. So, on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, by a vote of five to one, uh, the commission recommended the city council approve the rezoning request. Uh, subsequent to that, on December seventh, twenty twenty-one, the city council approved ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero dash forty-two and rezoned the property from B two to the planned development district. Um, we have some maps there to show you where this is, and it's on Washington, across from the, the school, and close to the railroad tracks. Um, this project is lagging a little further behind. Uh, we have not perceived any civil, uh, plan sets or building plans to date, uh, and so I believe Mr. Flanagan has some updates that he wanted to share with you on the project. Um, we, we're basically hoping to see the, the development, uh, begin some more progress in the immediate future, so, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Flanagan, if you'd like to update us?
Sure. Uh, so as Steve said, this one's a little bit behind Collins. Um, through some of the recommendations I made with the developer, I encouraged him to focus on getting Collins going, which is now within the next couple of weeks. As soon as we mobilize, we plan to should focus entirely on this one, um, just where everyone is, where the, the owner, Troy Kunkel, did acquire a parcel next door to this one. So, there was a little bit of site planning exercises going on to see how we could incorporate that lot. Um, there was even a discussion at one point if we would come back and rezone all of it again, to incorporate that with the PD. I think at this point, um, based on the conversations I've had with the developer, to keep things simple, we do plan to move forward with this, basically with the exact same layout that was approved previously with the PD, with the new unit types that have the deeper garages. Uh, and the idea is we would submit civil engineering plans in April or sooner, and we will start construction by the end of this year, at an absolute, absolute latest. Um, but that, that is the general update, we know this one's definitely lagging behind, but we're optimistic that as soon as Colin, Collins gets off the ground, this will be at the, at the front, so.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Flanagan? Thank you, sir. Okay, I need a motion.
Public hearing.
Public hearing? Oh, sorry. Skipping straight ahead. Let's open a public hearing, is anybody here, we want to speak, uh, in favor of this, uh, this reschedule? Anybody wish to speak against? Closing the public hearing. Now, commissioners, I need a motion.
Move to recommend it to the council.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of recommending to council, uh, approval of the updated schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, sir, so your next stop is city council. Thank you, appreciate your time, and, uh, commissioners, I believe I needed a, a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We're out. Thank you, everyone, for your time, we appreciate you, and we'll see you next month. We appreciate you and we'll see you next month.